All right. Well, welcome everybody to the uh Normal City Council Meeting, actually at an abnormal time of clock. Today's August the third. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic emergency, we have to continue to handle our city council meetings much differently than we usually do for the protection of the public and our city staff. I'm now going to ask our city manager, Mr. Heinz, to give us a brief explanation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lorenzo Heinz, City Manager. Good afternoon. This meeting of the Galt City Council is being conducted by teleconference slash video conference in compliance with the state and county stay-at-home orders and as allowed by the Governor's Executive Order N dash twenty-nine dash twenty, which allows for deviation of teleconference rules required by the Brown Act. Members of the public will see the council members and city staff who are appearing via remote video slash telephone connections. City council meetings will be held virtually by teleconference or video conference until further notice. Today's agenda states that rather than attending in person, residents may submit written public comments via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org prior to the council meeting. Any written comments that were received will be read out loud by the city council during the city council meeting by the city clerk on the appropriate agenda item, subject to the customary five-minute time limit, unless the same individual also appears and requests to speak live during the meeting. We will take the live comments first, and then the written comments will be read out loud. We're using, we're also using the Zoom webinar format, which allows the public to provide live public comment. Members of the public may use the link to enter the webinar as attendees. They should also be able to use the raise their hand option in the Zoom webinar to let us know if they would like to speak and should do so when the mayor announces the time for general public comment or when a specific agenda item is called if your comment concerns an item on the agenda. We request, as we typically do in-person council meetings, that speakers provide their name and address when they are called on to speak and their line is unmuted. But doing so is not required. Attending should also see the lower-hand feature if they change their minds and do not want to speak. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my comments.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right. We'll now call the meeting to order. Ms. Hubert, if I can get a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Yeah.
Councilmember Papino.
Here.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Lozano.
Here.
Mayor Farmer.
Here. Okay, if you would all now, please join us in a silent prayer followed by the flag salute. Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you, everybody. Okay. You want to do our replay statement, or do we do that after?
Yes. Okay. This, this meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable fourteen, the Local Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T Uverse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, August sixth at nine AM and Saturday, August seventh at nine AM. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com forward slash Metro Cable fourteen.
All right. Thank you. All right. Moving on to item B, our agenda approval additions and or deletions. Anything from council? Nope. Okay. All right. We'll move on to item C, public comment. Ms. Hubert.
Under Government Code Section five-four-nine-five-four-point-three, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments. Except for brief responses to questions, no discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Due to the statewide emergency and social distancing guidelines, public comments may be submitted via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org and will be read out loud, subject to the customary five-minute time limitation. Also, members of the public may participate electronically via HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash US zero-two-web-zoom.us forward slash J forward slash eight-eight-nine-five-five-nine-six-zero-three-nine-zero, webinar ID eight-eight-nine-five-five-nine-six-zero-three-nine-zero.
All right. Do we have any public comment this evening?
We do have one written comment. This is from Ryan Montgomery. Hello and good afternoon. I wanted to take this opportunity to request you all be thorough when it comes time to permanently decide on who will be our next Chief of Police. The people of Galt spoke very clearly with their vote in November regarding what direction they wanted our city to be led. Having council members such as Kevin Papino and Jay Vandenberg on the council wasn't an accident, not by a mile. It's what the people wanted, and you all know why. They want to be led by people who take their oath to uphold the Constitution seriously. They want to be led and governed by people who will uphold the Bill of Rights. They aren't just suggestions. Our individual rights are being eroded slowly but surely from Sacramento. I love the blue line. My father is a retired law enforcement officer. Many of my friends are law enforcement officers. Galt PD needs to have a leader that takes his oath seriously and values our individual liberties. With so much law enforcement experience on the city council, it shouldn't be difficult for you to be thorough in finding the right person for the job. Please follow the will of the people of Galt. With Sacramento behaving in such a dishonorable manner and given how political they have made this virus, please fill the chief seat with a constitutionalist. Galt doesn't want or need someone who will blindly follow our hypocritical and ethically bankrupt governor. Please be very thorough with this appointment. It's a very important appointment at an important time. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. Any hands raised online, Rose?
There are currently no hands raised.
Okay. And no further written comment, right, Tina? Okay. All right. Moving on to item D, presentations. Do we have any presentations this evening?
No presentations.
Okay. Moving on to item E, reports by city council members on regional boards, commissions, and committees. We'll start with our Vice Mayor, Mr. Sandu.
Uh, nothing to report this meeting.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Papino.
Nothing to report from me either.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Vandenberg.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. I attended the Air Quality Board meeting. They discussed the Air Pollution Control Office is adjusting their hours based on ever-changing regulations or requirements. So if you need, you feeling need to speak to someone in person, that might be a challenge and suggest calling ahead. They discussed agricultural burning and the needing for more funds in that area. You curiously, they're not a big fan of shipping that material to biomass, if you know what those are. At least it would be controlled environmentally. There's an environmental justice fund of a hundred and forty thousand dollar available for nonprofits. And lastly, there is a program for electric lawn mowers with the help from SMUD. You can get a hundred and forty-five dollar credit towards the purchase of a new electric lawnmower, a limit of five hundred. So they'll probably go fast. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Jay. Interesting. Councilmember Lozano.
Um, nothing to report.
All right. Thank you, sir. Uh, myself, I'm on the twenty-second, I participated on the C Street Walk Tour that we did for the the C Street enhancement project, and it was a it went very well, was highly attended. So I was very happy to see the output, out, turn out on that, and hopefully we'll get some good input. On the twenty-sixth, we had a public safety meeting, which the Vice Mayor and I attended. And um we discussed many items, including some continuing issues with some traffic concerns and some pedestrian concerns in some areas. And then last night, I attended the Galt Youth Commission, where we brought in a new mentor and kind of started going over the rules for the upcoming year. And so it should be exciting for the youth commission. We're still needing to mem, uh, actually, we're still short three um, youth members. So if anybody's interested or has a child that is of high school age, please let us know. So that's all I have. We'll now move on to item F, which is our information consent calendar. It is recommended that items one through seven be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion and or action is requested by a council member. These items are: item one is the minutes of the regular meeting for July twentieth, two thousand twenty-one. Item two is receiving file warrants for the period ending July twenty-first. Item three is Parks and Recreation Commission Annual Fiscal Year Report for two thousand twenty to through two thousand twenty-one. Item four is the ordinance of the City Council of Galt authorizing a levy of special taxes in a community facilities district, including certain annexation territory identified as Harlan Oaks uh, into the Galt Community Facilities District number twenty-two-one. Number five is going to be the approval of the Project and Expansure Plan and Transportation Development Act Claim for Fiscal Years twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty for twenty to twenty-one and twenty-one to twenty-two. And item six is going to be the contract amendment with the California Laboratory Services for Analytical Laboratory Testing, and item seven is what is item seven? Actually, I have a agenda that's not up there. It's not updated. It was IT item?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. Item seven is a contract amendment for dedicated internet services.
Right. Okay. I got in the packet. I just don't, I have a later uh, older agenda printed. So thank you. So those seven items, I'm looking for a motion to approve.
Move.
Moved by Vice Mayor Sandu.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Vandenberg. We have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Hi.
Councilmember Papino.
Hi.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Hi.
Councilmember Lozano.
Hi.
Mayor Farmer.
Hi. Consent calendar is approved five-zero. All right. Item G, Schedule Matters, Notice of Public Hearing. Do we have anything on that this evening?
Uh, none. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Moving on to a regular calendar. Item H, for our Treasurer's Office, item one's going to be a Treasury Report for a period ending June two thousand and twenty-one. Mr. Farrell.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Today's or tonight, this afternoon's update, I want to give you a few housing and a housing update here in Galt. So if you looked at the Galt Herald, which publishes this, you can see that for the month of June, there were thirty-nine homes that were sold here in, here in Galt. Median sales price was four hundred and sixty thousand. How that compares to last year is that last year, forty homes were sold in, in June for that three hundred and eighty-two thousand. So there was about a twenty and a half percent increase in the in the price of the homes here, here in Galt. And year-to-date, two thousand twenty-one, there was been a total of one hundred and forty-four uh, home sales at the median price of four hundred and sixty-seven thousand. So our homes are definitely increasing countywide. There was a twenty-five, about a twenty-five-point-three percent increase from last year, and the median, median sales price is five hundred and twenty thousand. So we're, uh, we're right in there as far as, as far as what's going on in Sacramento County. Now, I do have some, some good news, and that is in, in Galt, the unemployment rate has gone down to seven percent. If you remember, the last time I reported, it was a little bit north of ten percent. So that's good. Countywide, it's seven-point-four percent. Now, and a part of, also part of my economic update is I always, I always talk about interest rates. I got to tell you about treasury rates. So three-month treasury, treasury rate is what is called four basis points, or zero-point-zero-four. Okay, six-month is zero-point-zero-five. A one-year treasury bill is zero-point-zero-six. Okay, so you don't, there's nothing on the, on the short term there. Now, as a city, we earn for the month of June or in, ending June, uh, forty basis points, or zero-point-four-zero. Uh, which is, which is good. You know, that's, and, and then this particular month, I always report what the city earned in interest for this past fiscal year. Now, if you remember, this time last year, I, I predicted, I guessed, and I said, okay, it's going to be somewhere around a little bit north of four hundred thousand. And the final number came in at four hundred and fifty-two thousand eight-hundred-eight dollars and sixty-three cents. So it was pretty close. And this current fiscal year, I'm afraid we're going to be fortunate if we do hit four hundred thousand. And to kind of give you, give you a few examples, in May, just so a few, just a few months ago, we had a CD at Farmers and Merchants mature, and it was at a rate of two-point-three-five. And so the only way I could get it to mature, to, to re-up it or renew it for an additional two years, the, a good CD rate, believe it or not, is at zero-point-four-five. So we're taking about a one-point-nine percent hit, just in the difference of those few, a couple of years. So I will say that we have, you know, we believe in investing locally, and I also encourage our, our residents to invest locally. We have about twenty and a half million dollars invested right here in, in Galt, in local banks. So that's a very significant uh, investment as far as where our monies are. With that, Mr. Mayor, I have, I have nothing else, and I'll be more than happy to answer any questions. But you have the treasurer's report in front of, in front of all of you. And if you have any questions about any investments, I'd be more than happy to answer them. And I ask that you approve the treasurer's report as submitted, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Farrell.
Okay.
Does any of the council members have any question for Mr. Farrell? All right. Well, I would like to say just thank you for always giving a good report, and it always seems that sometimes bad news for a city is on an investment side always probably equates to good news for the people of Galt with their, you know, mortgage rates and things. And I do appreciate you always giving us the, uh, the, the skinny on the, on the housing market, because I think people that are watching, you know, that relates to them and not just to, you know, the financial uh, of the city. So I think it's interesting for people to hear that. So thank you for adding that each time. Appreciate it.
More than happy to.
All right. Well, with that, I will look for a motion to approve the treasurer's report for the period ending June two thousand and twenty-one. Moved by moved by Councilmember Vandenberg, seconded by Councilmember Papino. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Hi.
Councilmember Papino.
Hi.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Hi.
Councilmember Lozano.
Hi.
Mayor Farmer.
Hi. Treasurer's report passes with a five-zero vote.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Yep.
All right. Moving on to our next item under our regular calendar is going to be for City Manager's Office. The subject is the coronavirus COVID-19 update from our city manager, Mr. Heinz.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm here with the August third, two thousand twenty-one COVID update. Can everybody see the PowerPoint? All righty, great. From a regional basis, the Sacramento County cases have gone up five percent or fifty-two hundred cases since our last council meeting. The number of folks that we've lost countywide is, uh, is twenty-two, and that's a one percent increase. The number of cases here in the city of Galt or within our particular zip code is a hundred and twenty-two, and that's since, again, measured since our last council meeting. So it's gone up four percent. Luckily, we haven't lost anybody as a result of this virus, and so the number of deaths here in Galt still stand at forty-seven. On July twenty-ninth, Sacramento County issued an updated public health order directing that face coverings be worn indoors for all individuals, regardless of vaccination status. Since June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one, the average daily incident case rate of COVID-19 Sacramento, in Sacramento, has increased five-point-five-fold to reach a high transmission level of the U.S. Centers for Disease Controls indicators for the levels of community transmission. So to give folks an example, back in June, our case rate was sitting at about a little over three percent, between three and four percent. Today, as you, if you go out to the county dashboard, the case rate sits at twenty-five-point-seven. So that's three to twenty-five-point-seven. And so we're, um, we're definitely seeing a second wave of this virus. Hospitalizations from COVID-19 in Sacramento County have risen from sixty patients on June fifteenth to a hundred and seventy-five pages, patients as of July twenty-seventh. According to Sacramento County Public Health Officer, a continued increase in the proportion of the population vaccinated is best, is the best protection against the virus. Uh, the universal indoor use of face mask covering is the least disruptive and most immediately impactful additional measure to take. Sixty-three percent of all eligible Californians are fully vaccinated. Nine-point-six percent are partially vaccinated. Forty-eight-point-six percent of all eligible Sacramento County residents are fully vaccinated. Forty-three-point-three-one percent of all eligible residents in the nine-five-six-three-two zip code have been at least personally vaccinated. So that's good news. City, the city continues to administer the COVID-19 rapid antigen test at our Parks and Recreation Office at six-ten Chabola. Test results are available within fifteen minutes. No appointments necessary. Testing is available every Thursday, uh, seven AM to twelve PM. Um, we've got a vaccine clinic scheduled for Thursday, August fifth. The Johnson and Johnson and second doses of the Pfizer vaccine will be administered. Again, this will also be at six-ten Chabola from twelve PM to six PM, and again, that's Thursday, August the fifth. And Mr. Mayor, that concludes my update for COVID-19.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right. Moving on to our next item in the regular calendar is item three, from our Human Resources Department. The subject is the Resolution approving the Memorandum of Understanding between the City of Galt and the Galt Police Officers Association, the Galt Public Service Unit, Galt Police Department Civilians Association, amended personnel manual and amendments to the compensation and benefits for unrepresented employees. And our report will be given by our Human Resources Director, Ms. Van Steine.
Yes. Good afternoon, everyone. Can you see my screen?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So moving right in. Um, before you this afternoon is a resolution to approve the MOUs for the three bargaining units that we have at the city. Um, our Galt Police Officers Association, the Galt Public Service Unit, and the Galt Police Department Civilians Association. We are also asking you to approve similar salary and benefit amendments for unrepresented employees. And we have also presented our amended personnel manual with all of those changes as well. Um, the resolution does authorize the city manager to amend the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two budget to fund these salary and benefit adjustments. Um, and the resolution also authorizes the city manager to execute and carry out the intention of these agreements and the amendments. So for some background on the three bargaining units and negotiations with them, um, the GPOA MOU did expire on December thirty-first of two thousand twenty. That was about the height of the pandemic. And due to the ongoing pandemic, negotiations were deferred. Um, and then the GPSU and the GPDCMOUs both expired on June thirtieth of, uh, this year. Um, and so what we are presenting to council are contracts that have been voted on and approved by each of these bargaining units. We have received that confirmation. The GPOA MOU contract term begins January first, so we're backdating it. And it's a one-and-a-half-year contract. And for GPSU and GPDC, uh, it is a one-year contract. All three of those are good through June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-two. This next slide is just a highlight summary of, uh, the major changes in each of the MOUs and for unrepresented employees. Um, these are also outlined in the staff report. We've got some MOU language cleanup items. Um, some of those, if you looked at the redline version, some of those are just to be in compliance with existing state and federal regulations. The contract terms do include a two percent base pay increase for all of the bargaining units. Um, we are also proposing the same two percent base pay increase for unrepresented employees. And this, uh, for the unrepresented employees, that includes all directors, which are in the management group, uh, mid-management employees, and professional and confidential employees. Um, the provisions also include retroactive pay on base pay only. Um, so we're not going to be recalculating ad pays or overtime, anything like that. The retroactive pay will go back to the pay period beginning July fifth. Um, one of the benefit additions for all of the units is the addition of the Juneteenth Independence Day holiday. And this was a holiday recently signed into law as a federally observed holiday by President Biden. Um, so we're adding that holiday for employees to observe it beginning in two thousand and twenty-two. For the GPOA and the GPDC employees who are assigned to shift work, um, they will receive an increase to their holiday in lieu pay for recognition of that holiday. Um, on the health benefits side, effective January first of two thousand twenty-two, the city has agreed to set the medical premium contribution to pay eighty percent of the Kaiser Plan premium for employee-only coverage, plus one coverage, and the family coverage. Um, we are also recommending a one-time benefit, um, for each of the units. Um, and this is only effective for employees that are actively employed as of today. For the GPOA, um, the one, a one-time payment would be twenty-five-hundred per person. Um, we also recommend the same, um, one-time payment for our unrepresented police lieutenant and the interim police chief. Um, for the GPSU unit, we're looking at proposing, uh, forty hours of administrative leave, um, which is, um, to be used similar to vacation time. And it does not have cash value, and those hours are use it or lose it by June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-two. For the GPDC, um, we're proposing a one-time payment of seventeen-fifty for those in the police dispatcher classification, and then a thousand dollars one-time payment for the other GPDC members. Um, we are also proposing or recommending that all unrepresented full-time employees receive a one-time payment of a thousand dollars per person. Um, and then we're also recommending for our part-time and temporary essential workers that have worked with us throughout the majority of the pandemic, the last year and a half or last fiscal year, that they also receive a pro-rated amount of a one-time payment. Um, so this slide provides an overview of the financial impact of all these salary and benefit changes. The staff report does provide a breakdown of the charges that will be charged to each city fund, and it's based on the accounts that are associated with employee salaries. The one-time essential worker premium payment, we are proposing that that be covered under the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds that are received by the city. And so the total estimated annual cost is five hundred and thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and one dollars. And I think that kind of wraps it up. Uh, before we go to any questions or comments you may have, I just wanted to thank each of the three bargaining units for their understanding and their cooperation throughout the negotiations process. Um we started meeting with them back in April. Um yeah, and they've been very easy to work with and I do appreciate their cooperation in this process. So with that, I'll I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Van Stein. I'll go to the council first to see if anybody has any questions. Um Vice Mayor, do you have anything for Ms. Van Stein?
Just a comment and maybe one question. Uh first of all, thank you, Stephanie. Give us a very brief report, very detailed uh explain on the report. They also like to thank you, everyone of uh, you know, as my when I see that yes, two percent increase the apply, I'm looking at the. Side imply need to be. And the other time we have to look at the budget. And I'm very happy with the staff and the union represent, they come to some kind of uh agreement. It's a reasonable agreement between each other. Uh the only uh the the question I have, you know, that's uh the the association G P O A. They was expired uh almost six month ago, right?
Yes.
And the reason was because due to the COVID nineteen, we cannot get them any meetings, right?
Um well, we offered to meet, uh you know, that was really at the height of the pandemic and there was a lot of uncertainty at that time. And so. Um we did offer to meet, but they that particular unit came back and they said, you know, it. Sounds like it's best for us to defer meeting. And so that's what we did. And then we started meeting with them. As well as the other two units um in April this year.
Thank you. And all these are three units, their their contract going to expire the June of next year, right?
Yeah, so based on these terms that we're proposing, all three of those contracts would be expiring. Uh June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. This is so far. If I have any question, I will get back to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Papina, do you have any questions for Ms. Van Stein or comments?
Yeah, real quick, because I can't find it right now. Um and I hadn't noticed before, the retro uh retro pay on the two percent. Um that goes back to the pay per July fifth and is that uh across the board or does the. Did the P O A wouldn't go back further since they were out of contract?
Um no, we've got agreement with all of the units include and what we're proposing for the unrepresented as well. That we will only go back to that pay period of July fifth.
Okay, thanks. That's kind of what I thought. I just wanted to be clear. And then um a smaller item, I noted the um annual leave uh buyout of forty hours. Um and I noted that was moved to it's requested in December of the previous year. Paid in November. Is that just to be able to better project uh what'll need to be on hand for that payout at the end of the year?
Um so what you're referring to, I don't have it on these slides, but it is in the redlined M O Us. Um that's actually an I R S rule. Um it's called constructive receipt. And so what the I R S says is. If you're going to offer a vacation cash out option where you can cash out some of your hours. An employee has to elect the year before that if they want to either accrue the time or do I want to actually cash out the time? So that went to us was more of like a cleanup item because it truly is driven by the I R S.
Okay, thank you. That's uh that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Vandenberg.
Um thank you, Kevin. That was that was had the same curiosity as yourself. Uh I would like to thank you, Stephanie, for uh your accuracy in the numbers. During the process, I much appreciated. And I'd like to thank each of the three units for uh. Being reasonably understand understanding about where the city's at and what can be offered. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Lozano.
Um a- all of my questions were just answered uh in the last couple of uh. Uh folks that spoke. Um I I also wanted to thank uh Human Resources and. And city staff for uh getting this put together, excuse me. In these uh uncertain times and and uh I think I've mentioned to many of you before that. Uh working out of a outside of a contract or when a contract expired is uh means a lot. And uh and so doing what you can to to make that work. Uh even though they were out of contract is is really important. Uh I want to thank the leadership of all the labor organizations for their uh work uh day to day. And then also work on this M O U and uh. We look forward to getting back to the table probably within six or eight months, right? So uh. But anyhow, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember. I just want to uh kind of piggyback on what my other council member said. Thank you to everybody who was involved on both sides. You know, I we do appreciate our our uh officers and all our employees, even our um part-time employees that were mentioned for. Working through this last year, um you know, being out of contract and and for those in a time where. Uh even for our part-time workers, a lot of people aren't uh choose they're choosing not to come to work. Um we really appreciate those that did. Um and I I just want to sincerely say, you know, uh from me on behalf of the council that um we appreciate the the G P O A and the G P S U. And the the G P D C A for for being uh very understanding of the predicament that the city's in. Uh financially and that, you know, we're working very hard to uh to uh. Do some rebuilding here and and they're very cognizant of that in this process. And um I think what we came up with was something that's very fair. For both sides and uh and I think it demonstrates um. This council's continued commitment to the police department and to our workers and uh to the safety of our community. So. Thank you, Ms. Van Stein, for all your work and I'm glad that we can um put this monumental thing uh behind us and move forward to some other things. So with that, I will entertain a motion to approve. The adopt a resolution approving the memorandum of understanding M O U with Galt Police Officers Association G P O A for the period of January first. Two thousand and twenty-one through June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-two. Galt Public Service Unit G P S U for the period of July first, two thousand and twenty-one through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. And the Galt Police Department Civilians Association G P D C A. For the period of July first, two thousand and twenty-one through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. Amended Personnel Manual, revised salary schedules for those employees groups slash units. Also authorizing the amendment of the fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Dash twenty twenty-two budget to fund the salary and benefits adjustment and three authorizations city manager to execute and carry out. The intention of these agreements and amendments. Actually, do we have any public comment on this item? Sorry, I forgot to ask.
I know public comments.
Rose, do we have any hands raised online?
We currently do not have any hands raised.
Okay, thank you. So do I have a motion to approve?
Moved.
Moved by Councilmember Lozano. I will second it. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Hi.
Councilmember Papino.
Hi.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Hi.
Councilmember Lozano.
Hi.
Mayor Farmer.
Hi. Resolution passes five to zero. Thank you for your work, Ms. Van Stein and everyone.
Very much. Thank you.
All right, we'll now move on to item I in our agenda communication. Do we have any communication this evening, Ms. Hubert?
No communication.
All right. Item J, City Clerk's Report.
Nothing this afternoon.
All right, item K, Comments by Staff. Mister Heinz.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um I'll I'll start it off here and uh just wanted to let the council and citizens know that. We presented the uh Galt Market Plan, uh the Visionary Plan to the Consummate Services District Board of Directors. Back on uh July twenty-first and uh was a good meeting and uh that board of that particular body was uh. Uh very open to our plans and uh they were they were impressed by some of the ideas that the City of Galt were looking at. So I just thought I'd mention that to you. We also presented the Galt Market Plan to the Pacific, um to the uh Galt Lions. And uh we had a very good meeting, had a lot of good ideas come out of that meeting. And so. I wanted to send my appreciation to both the C S D Board and to the Galt Lions for um. Uh for uh uh attending our presentations and for their good ideas. And so I'm going to move on to the next staffer and let's go to uh Armando Solis, our Parks and Recreation Director.
Good, uh I guess afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Um Rose, if I could get the the screen.
You're with me. I'm working on that. You should. Be able to now.
Okay. Can you guys? See my screen?
Yes.
Yes. So we have some great things coming up. Uh I'm going to give you all the good news first. So our Sound of Summer Series starts this Saturday. Um it goes from six thirty to eight thirty. Our first band will be a touch of magic. Uh the cost is five dollars per person. It'll be held on Veterans Field. And uh we will have some food trucks there for everybody. We welcome everybody out to uh bring their chairs or blankets. And enjoy some great music. Then the following weekend, our uh summer drive-in series starts. Uh the War with Grandpa will start. It'll be twenty-five dollars per car at the Galt Market. And the four movies are shown there. Uh at the next council meeting, I'll go over the our next concert series and band. And then we added a free shuttle service to our farmer's market. Um so we're trying to connect uh both sides of Galt. Um you see the parks listed uh below by the bus. They will be doing a loop, three loops through there to pick up uh passengers that uh would rather get a ride. And probably partake in some of our restaurants and our farmer's markets. And here's just a screenshot. We will post this. We will send this out of the loops and times it'll be at the at our parks. And then now for the bad news. Uh due to lack of uh participation, uh our food truck series has been canceled. Uh last week was their last week. And so I want to thank Food Food in the Hood, nine one six for coming out. And perhaps maybe we can um do something in the future. And um one other note, uh I believe Mayor Farmer had made a comment about trying to get people to work. Uh in case you guys hear some um some things about our after-school program. We have waiting lists for uh most of our programs. We do not have enough staff currently to. Take on all the numbers that we used to. So we we're still trying to hire people. Uh we can't even get them to apply at this point. Uh so our numbers are going to be reduced um down and there will there will be a waiting list in case you hear from any of our citizens. And um our after-school program SOAR is a great program. Be glad to answer any questions. I know that was a lot, but uh glad to answer them for you.
Thank you, Mister Solis. Um would it be possible for our P I O or someone to um. Uh I know you readily post there, I forget where, but on the uh on the job openings somewhere, uh we could we get that going uh, you know. More steadily on the uh city social media so that so that we can share that out and get that information out as much as possible. Um to try to, you know, see if anybody's interested. Um go ahead.
I'm sorry, I forgot. One big thank you to our Armando Morales and Jonathan Espinoza from our Parks Landscape Crew. Tonight, as you know, is National Night Out. And they did not uh rearrange the schedule for our mowing, but added the three sites. And got that done today, so the parks would look a little nice for our our citizens. Uh they didn't stop anything. They didn't move anything. They just added it to their busy schedule. So I just wanted to give them a big shout out for getting that done for tonight. Sorry.
Absolutely. Thank you. Yeah, we want to leave that out. It's very important. And uh those guys are working their butts off out there. I think shorthanded as well too. So um the the cancellation of the food trucks, Armando, do you, I mean, I felt that. Maybe some of it had to do with some of the hot weather we've had too, and people just kind of not want to be out. Like at least at five and six o'clock. Um do you think that has something to do with it or?
I, you know, they were here till eight o'clock. So, you know, even in the cooler nights, they are going to work with us in the the concert series. They're sending out trucks from some of their things. They're not done working with the city. We just need to find that niche that our citizens are going to really fall into and and I'm hoping. Maybe that Sound of Summer will will um will be that niche.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you for looking forward to this. All sounds pretty exciting and I encourage people, if anybody's watching, to uh come check this stuff out. I'm sure that we'll be seeing this on city social media and we'll try to pass that information around and get it out there to everybody. So thank you, Armando. Does anybody have any questions? Um and the council members have questions for Armando or comments? I can't see everybody because of grids. Just speak up if you do. All right, there we go. Okay. All right, no questions in. All right, Mister Heinz, next staff.
Let's go with the Public Works Director, Mike Selling.
Uh thank you, uh City Manager, uh Mayor Farmer and Councilmembers. Just a couple of things. Uh one first, just a quick clarification. On the bus schedule, Armando, I know he just showed it pretty quickly. Uh it was brought to our attention that it only showed a five thirty to. Eight uh thirty timeframe and it should be five to eight thirty. So the uh the service provider store is revising the schedule. And we'll have one uh out for uh the P I O and social media and whatnot. Uh hopefully, uh early tomorrow, if not before the end of today. And then the other thing that I wanted to dovetail on Mayor Farmer's comments. On the uh C Street Project, uh we did have a good uh project walk. Uh this was. Twenty twenty-second, a couple of days after the last council meeting and had some good participation. I think we had a good four, maybe five groups. Uh out there, got a lot of good input there. And then later we had the workshop over at the Chabola Center. And uh got a lot of good input there. So our consultant is busy kind of uh, you know, condensing those comments and and developing some. Uh concept alternatives that we'll look forward to presenting uh at the next workshop, which is currently uh tentatively scheduled for the nineteenth of August. So uh look forward to that. And that's what I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Um next, uh we'll have Community Development Director Craig Hoffman.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. The housing element is coming back before you uh on August twelfth. We'll be at the Planning Commission meeting. That is a public hearing. It's been noticed in the paper and we'll be uh providing kind of a workshop overview. On August seventeenth to the council and then back for uh September seventh for. An adoption of that document, but uh three public hearing opportunities if anyone in the public's interested. And uh uh watch those presentations and definitely uh provide any comments that you might have to staff. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Uh Human Resources Director Stephanie Van Stein.
I have no other updates today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh Economic Development Manager Amy Mendez.
Good afternoon. Um I don't have anything to add this afternoon, but just touching on what Mayor Farmer had mentioned about the. Um. Thor Program, I think what we might be able to do, just understanding that there's an issue with hiring for that position, we can do something. Sort of one-off on social media and through Nextdoor to try and generate some interest in that. We typically will post the job postings once every other week. Um. Sometimes there's a lot of them and it becomes a little overwhelming, I think, for folks to try to, you know, determine which um positions are. For what programs. So we can push the SOAR out independently and I think that might be able to at least help us generate some interest there. Uh but that's it. That's all I have for this afternoon. Thank you.
All righty, thank you. Uh City Attorney Frank Splendorio.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor, Council. I have nothing uh additional to report.
Righty, uh City Clerk Tina Hubert.
No updates.
Okay, Executive Assistant to the City Manager Rose Roadacker.
Thank you. I have nothing tonight.
Yeah, very good. All right. So last but not least, Interim Chief Rick Small. And uh Rick, if you can tell us a little bit about tonight's festivities, that would be great.
Yes, sir. Uh thank you and uh good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. Uh tonight is the much anticipated uh National Night Out. Uh for those of you who have attended in the past, uh this is a fantastic event. Uh we got a lot of stuff going on. Um it's going to be from six P M. To eight P M. Three different locations, Meadowview Park, uh the Softball Complex and Community Park. So uh hope to see everybody out there. Uh there's a lot of good stuff going on. So. Um just encouraging everybody who's listening, uh the entire community uh. just encouraging everybody who's listening, the entire community, come out and see not only what Galt PD is about, but more importantly, to see what your community is about.
Very good.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you so much. Mr. Mayor, that concludes staff comments.
All right, thank you. And Ms. Mendez, thank you for the, the comment on the, the employment. If we can do some targeted stuff, that'd be great. Appreciate that. Go around to our council members. We'll start off with, I'm sorry, we'll move on to item L, comments by city council members. Future agenda items, and we'll start with our Vice Mayor, Mr. Sandu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, everybody. I would like to thank you all the staff for working hard during COVID and also working every department really working hard. I especially thank you, Armando, and the Police Chief. In terms, Police Chief, he's already made arrangement for tonight for National Night. I also like to thank you, public comment. Especially thank you for Ryan Montgomery. He gave us a written public comment. I will let him know, we, we, we hear it and city manager hear it. We want to be the next. I believe everybody want to be the next chief, be the best in the city. The next agenda item, I would like to ask city manager and mayor. There is a concern, a lot of citizens, I ask the stop sign concern on Vauxhall and Carillion, but I like to ask both of you if you can bring that agenda item as a discussion in next meeting. I would like to have Mr. Mayor or city manager concerned, we can ask my other brothers if they are interested to move that agenda item as soon as possible. We need to get the answer back to them.
Mr. Vice Mayor, are you referring to the item we discussed at the safety meeting? Is that?
Yes, yes. Thank you, sir.
I would, I would support that as an agenda item for discussion. I believe there's a quite large petition going around about that. There was some very robust discussion in the, in the safety meeting about it and I, I think it is something that I think stands out above some of the normal things we've been hearing of other places. And I think to at least bring it forward, have a discussion, I would at least support that. So I would be in favor of adding that as an agenda item. I don't know if any of the council members would be.
I would certainly be interested to hear more. I can't say that I'm fully informed, so I would look forward to this discussion.
Is there a recommendation or some sort of conclusion coming from public safety at this point or?
We had, yeah, thank you for asking. We had, so it had been discussed for a while that we brought, and the Vice Mayor brought it up at the safety meeting under our traffic agenda item. The, I haven't seen the petition. I just know the amount of names that are on it. And then we had some pretty strong comments from some of our safety commissioners, one of which actually whose husband was in a serious accident at that intersection unbeknownst to us before she mentioned that. But she was very supportive of at least bringing a bigger spotlight on this intersection. So I think Public Works did give a very brief info, some information on some studies they had done in the past. I don't recall it being like overwhelming supportive of, of, of a controlled intersection, but I think based on what was said in the safety, I just, I feel compelled as long with Vice Mayor that we should at least bring it back to the council. Maybe we can have a report from Public Works to the council on what was found and then we can hear from some of the citizens of what their concerns are. And so I, I just feel it should be discussed at a higher level. And so that's, that's what I got for you, Kevin. Sorry. No, I'm more than that.
No, that's fine. Yeah, if there's, you know, a recommendation coming, then I'd be, yeah, I think we should discuss it.
Mr. Heinz, I guess that'd give you a majority there. If you could, we could, you and I could discuss prior to next meeting what that agenda item would look like and
Right. Yeah, we'll, we'll discuss timing of that agenda. The next meeting is pretty stacked. So we'll discuss that as well. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Heinz? Mr. Heinz?
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Mr. Heinz, I, I do understand the agenda, but this item is also important to just keep in mind.
I understand, sir. I definitely understand the gravity of the situation.
Yeah, because this is to me is that agenda item very compared to all other agenda item is coming very soon. It's same important than this.
I understand. I definitely understand the gravity. We also have some state mandated items that we have to discuss at the next meeting as well. Okay, but I'll definitely, we'll have the discussion with the mayor, but I definitely understand, Vice Mayor.
All right, thank you, sir. Councilor Lozano, I did not mean to overlook you. I just didn't see your hand raised at first, so go ahead.
I, I raised it after we started to move on. I, I just want to ask, I mean, I, I think we need to bring this, at least have the discussion about Vauxhall and Carillion. And I don't mean to muddy the waters here at all. I'm not familiar with a petition, but I do know that I've had some significant concern from citizens. I don't believe there's a petition. However, the intersections of Elk Hills and Lake Canyon and Carillion, especially when school gets started back up, we'll start to roll in a few questions and concerns about those intersections. What I would like to do is maybe not with this particular item, but at least at some point soon after, have at least some data collected on those two particular intersections. I'm not suggesting that there be a stop sign or a flashing beacon. I, I don't even know what it would be. Not suggesting anything, but at least having that discussion. I'm concerned and have been for a long time before the Carillion master plan was put into, into motion about kids and families walking across Carillion during commute hours going to and from school, which the state does mandate they do. And so, you know, I just, it's, it's a scary intersection. I walk it regularly earlier in the morning and, and not during commute hours, but it's, it's even scary then. So I would just put that out there to at least if we're going to look at something on Carillion that, that we, we take a look at those two intersections as well.
And Rich, to clarify, you're referring to Elk Hills at, at Carillion and Lake Canyon at Carillion. Those two cross?
Correct.
So, Mr. Heinz?
Where the two school crossings are.
Yeah. So, Mr. Heinz, that, those are the intersections that we went out and looked at, yourself, I, and Council Vanderburg, remember with the, the one that had the, Lake Canyon was the one, the flashing beacon? Yeah. So just to remind you. Okay. Absolutely. I would support what you said, Rich, as well. I think those are all worthy of discussion and looking at. So. All right.
Mr. Mayor, just as a point of order, because it was added, is it required three council members support it?
We did have a majority that was in favor of, of having it.
Not the added two?
I, I, well, we can, I'll just say I'll, I'll support that as well, just so it's done. Okay.
I, I think what Jay was asking is I muddied the waters a little bit with after everybody agreed to it. And so the question I think was more of, does the majority of the council agree to look at Elk Hills and Lake Canyon at Carillion?
I, I would be in favor of looking at all three of the intersections we discussed, the Vauxhall at Carillion, the Elk Hills and Lake Canyon at Carillion. If we could bring those three back for discussion on agenda item, that's what I would support. Is that what we have in the majority of the council? I see nodding heads. Okay. All right. Thank you, Jay. Thank you, Rich. All right. So we are going on to next council member, which is Mr. Papino.
So I missed the last meeting, but wanted to compliment the staff, volunteers and the whole community on the great Independence Day parade and everything. My only complaint would be that 5K, I think, was mismeasured because it's a lot longer than they used to be. But other than that, that was great. So I wanted to cover that. And then also thanks to everybody working on the MOUs to, to come up with the solution, given the unpredictability of next year. So compliments to the, the staff, the bargaining units and everybody. And other than that, we'll see you all out at National Night Out tonight.
All right. Thank you, sir. Councilmember Vanderburg?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I would reiterate on, I'm really glad to see that the MOUs are completed to everybody's satisfaction. Thank you, Armando, for prepping the community for tonight and I look forward to seeing everyone out there. Thank you for the public comment. Like to see more, but I'm glad, glad that we get them. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, sir. Councilmember Lozano?
Yeah, again, you'd think after 18 months of being on Zoom, I'd get my mute button finger fixed, right? And it would work great. So real quick, I also attended the C Street Enhancement Project Open House. Lots of people there. I think there was some good input. I read, went through and read the notes kind of after everybody was gone and, and definitely some, some good input. And I look forward to further community input on that, on that project. And, you know, it, that is going to, that is the entry to our city. And I think it's important that it look its best and it gives people direction of where to go. And with the community that came out, they did a good job of taking a look at each piece of it and, and evaluating. So I also did attend the CSD Board Meeting with Mr. Heinz and Mr. Hoffman. Haven't received any specific input back. Generally, I think people, the board was very, very pleased with the vision. I think they were at least speaking with a board member before the presentation who had seen pieces of it. They were real impressed with how some of the plan, at least in the visioning document, was derived from a wide range of citizens in this, in the city, meaning the Commission on Aging as well as the Youth Commission. And so that, that was pretty impressive and, and, and they, they were pretty impressed by that. And so just lastly, I want to thank everybody and who worked on the MOU. I know I, I talked about that earlier. Thank our bargaining groups for working with us and, and certainly you know, working with us in the future. We do have some, always have some trying times, but I think more specifically, and I'll I'm going to beat the dead horse a little bit so all my colleagues can hear it once more, but we, we do have some significant issues related to lighting a landscape. And I'll have to remind everybody that we, we're using subsidizing that lighting, those lighting landscape districts, at least two of them, by about $300,000 in general fund money. And I really look forward to our community being involved in this process, our council, our committees and commissions, and certainly our employees and, and labor. So look forward to that in the near future and thank everybody and I will, I will see everybody out there tonight.
All right. Thank you, council member. I would like to bring it to raise the tension that we are on the cusp of having the shortest council meeting in recent history. Just going to throw it out there before I add, probably like a minute onto it real quick. So real quick, you know, all the things have been in order. So I'm glad that we're going to go out to National Night Out and be amongst our, our police officers on the, on the, in the wake of getting this MOU signed for them. That'll actually is a nice, a nice thing. And hopefully we'll see everybody out Meadowview Park, Community Park and Softball Complex festivities planned, all three events, or all three areas should be phenomenal. It always is. I always look forward to it. I'm excited. It's going to be a little warm at first, but there's going to be a lot of things going on. So last thing I just want to say real quick before I adjourn is just piggybacking on what Rich said. You know, we get a lot of complaints from people, you know, about the landscaping and, and, you know, this and that. And it's, it's an ongoing thing and we, we, we all hear you. Our council, all the council members, you guys email and, and call. We hear you. But I want to jump up on a soapbox a little there right now. And I want to remind people that although we are working, you know, diligently to try to come up with solutions to solve that. I'm a little disappointed that how much effort a lot of people put in, in this community, picking up trash and litter in the community. And then when I drive through town and see the areas that myself and volunteers and some of our staff members and our council members have picked up just, you know, a couple of weeks ago, looked like we hadn't even touched them. And so this is our community. It belongs to everybody. It's not just one person's town. And I would encourage everybody, both residents and businesses, to do your part in keeping our town looking its best. It's not just landscaping. It's, it's all of it. And these are things that don't cost anything, but just a couple of minutes of your time or a few seconds of your time to pick up a cup or piece of napkin or whatever and do your part. And with that, I'd like to, Craig, I want to applaud Craig for being, you know, very supportive when I call him and, and about things like this. And I would like to see stronger enforcement or at least stronger educational, maybe a little bit of a heavy hand with some of the, the, the biggest offenders in town. We have some, some businesses in town that are just, I mean, those are the worst areas. So we all need to do our part. And if we have to start, you know, paying visits to these places and, and getting them on board, we need to do that. So I'll jump off my box and say that everybody have a good evening. We'll see you out at National Night Out. And with that, I will adjourn a meeting 4:06 PM. Good night, everybody.